Because they come in different sizes. Is it a pretty big one?
No.
Is it like a?
It's a mini excavator. It's only an eight and a half thousand piece of, pound piece of equipment. It's very small.
And that might be able to be kept in the overhang area, think?
Sure.
Okay, so that would keep it out of sight.
So we've got one problem resolved?
Sounds like it.
Okay. Anything else about his operation that would require OI as opposed to NRC?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Were you done? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Miller, if I could have you come back up.
So I think I started my remarks at the beginning talking about what was discussed last month in some of what was needed or what was requested from the planning commission. And we don't, we don't have that information. And I think it's critical that we have that information before we can make a recommendation to the board of commissioners.
I'm sorry, which was?
Which was a detailed stipulation letter that addresses site cleanup, stormwater, landscaping, placement of dumpsters. So we need a site plan that depicts all that. And perhaps if there's, if you have some questions, what I would recommend is that we hold this for another 30 days and then you meet with John Peterson and perhaps Jeannie to, so that they can discuss with you what, what we're requiring.
Yes, sir. And just for various, what do you mean by site cleanup? That's a very, my definition from your definition is going to be night and day different. I've already showed you that I have cleaned up the site significantly. And y'all still want it cleaned up more. The Mableton Coalition wants me to paint. I said I would pressure wash. That wasn't good enough. And I keep having to jump through all these hoops. And it seems like every time I jump through a hoop, it's not good enough. The hoop gets higher and I have to jump through it again. So I'm just confused about all that because you're like, hey, spend more money on this property and lead me along down this road where I've spent all this money on this property and then you still don't zone me correctly. And I'm out a whole bunch of money, which doesn't sound like a very nice thing to do to anybody.
Well, I, I think, I think that's why I think a hold for 30 days so you, so you can get a better feel for what is required from the professional staff would be helpful.
We've already gotten their direction, though.
But we don't have any documentation showing, that documentation with the site plan, what I just described to you.
Right. What legally information do you need?
We, we, we can require a stipulation letter that describes, you know, the items that, site cleanup, what that looks like, stormwater management and what you intend to do. We've already heard from staff on what you possibly could do. There are a few ways it sounds like that, that could be addressed. And we need, we need to see how you plan to address that.
Sure, no problem. I cannot provide you a letter with site cleanup if you don't tell me what the site cleanup is.
Well, that's for you to discuss with the staff.
Right, but you're requesting that, not the staff.
Well, the staff understands what that means.
I don't think they did because we asked.
I think, I think staff will, they, they're the professional staff. They, they can figure it out.
That, that's odd because the first meeting that I had with them, they didn't have any problems with the zoning change.
I, I'm asking you to meet with them? Are you saying you don't want to meet with them?
Well, what I'm saying is I have met with them and there was no issues. I had a meeting where I showed up and they asked us a whole bunch of questions. All these nice people through here asked me a nice, a whole bunch of questions and they didn't have any problem with it then.
That, that's fine.
And legally, the site cleanup is not an issue.
You keep saying legally.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't, I don't know that that's accurate, but, but.
It is.
Well, that's your opinion. And I think we have to take into consideration not only the requirements of staff, but we also look, we look at, at what the community asks for as well. And so that's what we're doing in this case.
So I guess if you're going to look at what the community asked for, why didn't they do anything for 50 years? Why was the property left neglected? Why was this allowed to happen for 50 years? The next thing with stormwater, right, we have been in contact with them constantly, but at the same time, they haven't told us anywhere to direct the stormwater besides on someone else's property, which I would have to go to that church and ask them if I can put my stormwater on their property. And I don't think they're going to allow that.
I, I think, I think the stormwater staff person just gave you a few options on how to.
No, sir, he did not. He didn't say anything. He only said about how to slow the water down, not where all the water goes at the end. So I have 22% that I have to capture in underground storage and then I have to put that water somewhere. And that water goes to First, Mableton First Baptist Church. I cannot continue to do that. I don't think that you, these good individuals here would allow me to do that if I pulled a permit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it does make sense. But do you have an engineer on, that you've retained to help you?
Yes.
Address this? And do they have some solutions potential, potentially?
I don't think you understand the way the stormwater works in gravity. And I don't mean to be rude, right? But because the property slopes, right? The only way that, and this is my professional opinion as a master plumber with almost 30 years of plumbing experience in dealing with many groundwater situations. I would have to have some sort of storm drain to my property or out in the middle of the street, which is fine also. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
And you can't provide me with that?
We can't not, no.
And so how do I solve the issue?
Talk to.
We did.
The planning staff.
His, his solution, and he just stood up here and told you the solution, was to keep having it run to their property. Does that make, am I?
Yeah, it makes sense.
And that was his professional solution. And I'm telling you, legally, I cannot continue to do that. Because First, Mableton First Baptist Community Church or Mableton First Baptist Church has already had stormwater issues.
Got it.
Do, do you see where I'm at an impasse on that?
There's got to be a solution. There's got to be.
Yes, sir. The solution is Cobb County has to provide me with a stormwater drain.
Well, I, I think we'd benefit from some additional conversation around, around what the options are. So I'd like to consider a hold on this so we can, so you can continue these conversations, sir.
Sure. Second.
We have a. Yep.
Just one, just one reminder, one thing that we spoke about last time was I don't believe this would go through site plan review as a current submission. So some of the additional analyses that we're trying to kind of tease out here are really a function of not, this not going, having to go through site plan review. So this is kind of the opportunity to do things such as, there's design guidelines for the area around landscaping. So things as simple as just writing down, put, put up X number of trees or, you know, having a plan just so that there's a visual barrier. Those are just proposals. And a stip letter, you can say, I'm amenable to that or not. And, you know, we can propose additions to it or deletions from it or modifications, but it at least provides a basis for discussion. So it's not meant to be an attack on you or, and I certainly understand, you know, it's not a cheap investment, right? To, in order to make and accommodate improvement of the area. But, and improvement of the property further. And, you know, do respect all of the efforts that you've put in already to improve the property given its prior condition. We, we acknowledged that last time where we talked about what used to be there. But there is a small area guidelines for this where it does provide some guidance around the character that's trying to be achieved with some of these. So my hope is that, you know, with Commissioner Hughes, that over the next month, you can probably tease out some of those elements of that character in, in discussion with the staff. And maybe you don't get there on stormwater, but maybe you can get there on things like visual screening.
Sure. So my biggest issue is the stormwater. And in order to put in the underground tank that you're requesting that I put in, we would have to go through site plan review.
Yep.
Does that make sense? So if I agree.
I'm just saying the, the, the additional, the request as presented here. In which we asked about last time, which was in the meeting minutes, was that this, as requested today, would not have to go through site plan review.
Sure, like we've already had, like, for instance. We do plan on painting the building and replacing the fence, right? We do have quotes for those and it was always on my agenda, right? I, I don't run, I'm a very clean person and I want clean respectable business. So the product that we have now is not our end product. My problem is that you're suffocating me so I can't do business in your county, right? So it, it's such a financial burden. For instance, my quote here to replace the fence, right? And this is without some of the features that you're going to request from me, just putting up new chain length fence, is $37,000. And I don't know if y'all know how plumbing businesses operate. They, very small margins. Very, very small margins. So while I appreciate y'all and I really, really do appreciate y'all, right? And I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to find out where the ultimate solution is. So that way, when I come back to you in 30 days, y'all don't go, oh, but this, which is what I'm experiencing now. Because I don't, the first thing is I don't understand how you can expect me to safely remove my stormwater if you're not going to provide me with a way to do it. So how do I, we're at an impasse there. So, you know, even if I do all the stuff that you're asking me on the other side, we're still going to be at an impasse. So how do I go overcome that hurdle? And you're like, there must be a solution. Well.
Not to interrupt you, but I think we've got a motion on the table and a second.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion passes 3-0. Next case.
Hey, Jeannie, can you have him wait, wait for a minute? All right, thank you.
All right. All right. Next case is LUP 12 of 2024. Reginald A. Rutherford requests a temporary land use permit to allow business and related vehicle parking at land lots 1244, 1245, 1272, 1273 and 1319 of the 19th District. Their property is located on the south side of higher, of higher Lithia Springs Road, east of Holman Road. Is the applicant present? A director of the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 12? Left direction, there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in?
Good morning. I'm Reginald Rutherford, CEO of Indigo Landscapes.
Good morning, sir. Please proceed with presenting your case.
Yes, of course, I'm requesting a temporary land use to store, park my vehicles for my company, Indigo Landscapes LLC. I, I have a 40 acre property where the vehicles are currently stored and parked are off the road. Behind, behind my house to the right. And there was, there was really no complaint from, initially from, from anyone in my community. It originated from a neighbor, I guess, who was had a dumpster stored on the side of the road and someone called in on them. And, and so I guess zoning or the inspector saw the vehicles parked there. And that's how it originated. At any rate, again, I'm requesting that the vehicles are allowed to remain to be parked. Again, they're, the parking space is, is off the, off, behind my house and, and not very visible. There is visibility from a side road, Keaton Road. But, but again, there hadn't been complaints from anyone about the vehicles being stored. There, there are landscape vehicles as well as a bobcat, a skid steer. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. Yeah, so from the initial hearing last month, I think the board recommended that, that we delay a decision to, I guess you guys came together, so that's why we're back here.
Thank you, sir. There was no opposition for this case. So this is in District 4, so this is the district that I represent. And I'll ask some questions. I'm just curious, how long, how long have you been in this business, in the landscape business?
Yes, sir. I've been in business a little over 20 years in, in the Cobb County Powder Springs area. Been in Powder Springs over 20 years as well.
Okay. At this, from this location or?
No, I've been at this location a little over three years when I purchased the property. Prior to that, I was literally one street over in a subdivision at that time.
Okay. And it's my understanding, just based on your request, that you're asking to be allowed to store two single axle dump trucks, two bucket trucks, two landscape trucks, two bobcats for a total of eight vehicles? And then you have four employees? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So there'd be a total of, of 12 vehicles per, on a daily basis, basically?
Yeah, correct.
Do you have landscape materials also on the site as well? Landscape materials?
No landscape materials are, are kept outside. Pretty much our landscape materials, we don't just store just to keep stock. We order landscape materials as needed, so there really aren't any landscape materials that's left outside.
Okay. And looking at the gra, the aerial map that's on the screen right now, I, I want to make sure, so your house is, is where you see R30? Is that your house?
That, that is correct.
And then just above that, that's, that area right there, is that where your vehicles are parked or are you proposing to park them? Where he's circling the cursor.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, so there's Keaton down, Keaton Lane Southwest down the left-hand side there. And what sort of surface, parking surface do you have there now?
Co, uh, correct. Let me just make a correction on the, on the house. No, I'm sorry, R30.
Okay, your house is up actually off of.
Yes, yes, there you go. Yes, yes.
And so I see some trucks there now, I mean, based on this aerial.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And then it looks like some, I don't know what those are. I, I don't want to speculate railroad ties or something that's there. Can't tell what that is.
Where? Where are you pointing?
To the right, right there.
Oh, that's, that is a old, I guess, a old photo. There, there's actually no, nothing there now that, that's, that's clear. There's nothing there. Yeah, that was some, those were some logs that, I guess, when they took that. And that had to been, that had to been a while, a while back when that photo was taken.
Okay. And you mentioned this was, there was a code enforcement complaint that precipitated you filing this application. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's all the questions I have right now for the applicant. Y'all have any questions? Get ready.
Thank you, sir. What, what is it, just out of curiosity from this visual, what is it your neighbor has right up against the property line? Your neighbor just to the north?
I'm sorry, you say what is it that they?
Yes, you can look at the cursor. He's helping you. Look at the cursor.
Yes, what about that neighbor?
What is all that stuff?
Oh, that's my neighbor's, I, I don't know exactly from what I hear. Years ago, they used to have kind of a automotive restoration shop there and they restored old cars. That's only from hearsay. I don't know that to be true, but those sheds are, those sheds and utility buildings are still there. That is my neighbor's.
Is there any fence on the property line between you?
Yes, that's on the property line. That's my driveway that runs just beside that. Yeah, right there. Yep. And so, yes, that's right on the property line.
How about going down to Keaton Lane? Is there already a fence there?
Say that again.
Along, along your neighbor's property line, heading from your driveway to Keaton Lane. Is there a fence there as well or not?
There's a, yes, there's a fence there as well.
What, what kind of fence?
I believe that is a, that is a wooden fence.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then just going back, the eight vehicles that you want to park here, how long have you owned those, owned those, those vehicles? How long have you owned those vehicles?
How long have they been, have they been parked?
How long they've been part of the business?
Since I've owned the property.
Okay, so three years ago.
Three years, yes, sir.
He said, how long have you owned them, I think?
Oh, how long have I owned the vehicles? Of course, they weren't all purchased at the same time, but some of them, my most recent one vehicles, probably about seven years, five, seven years. And some of the older ones, maybe going back 10, 10 years or so.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. We may have some more questions for you. I'm going to ask you to take a seat and I'm going to call staff up real quick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can have code enforcement come up, please.
Yo, Lisa Fawson, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Good morning. Can you just, just provide us with an overview of the current code enforcement status of this property?
We received a complaint in September of 2023 about customary home occupation. This is running a business from a residential property. The officer went out on September 20th of 2023 and issued a notice of violation for litter, customary home occupation to the office manager. The officer observed multiple vehicles on the lot and also debris, a large pile of, of debris at the property. The officer spoke to the owner over the phone and explained the violations and advised him that he would need to get the property rezoned or apply for variance to continue operating the business at the property. So during that timeframe, the officer worked with the property owner on compliance and he did clean up the debris and everything that we requested. And then he finally applied for rezoning and everything, for a land use permit. So right now, we're just waiting on this process to be completed.
Okay, all right. Any questions from a, from a commissioner for code enforcement? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
John, I, I know staff has recommended denial. Can you, what's the justification for the denial in this instance?
It was mostly because of the code enforcement complaint that, you know, it, it made someone feel like there's a nuisance or the property looked bad at one point in time. So that's the, the main reason why staff recommended denial of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. If I could have the applicant come back up? So another question I have for you is, is to, have you investigated any options for relocating these vehicles to another nearby piece of property where you could store them and then go pick them up or your employees could go pick them up? Is that something you've explored at all?
Yes, I've, you know, considered that option. However, just financially, it's, it's not, not feasible to pay for and find a, a storage space that's large enough to park all the vehicles. So I have, to answer your question, I have entertained that, you know, that thought, but it's just not, not in a position to purchase another property, that's for sure. And even renting, finding a space to lease or rent, you know, it's just financially, you know, it doesn't work for us.
Okay. I, you know, just my take on this is, you know, eight, eight vehicles seems to be a lot, even, even for a 40 acre tract. That's a lot of vehicles for, for this. And then, you know, where they've got to be situated, they've got to be, they are certainly seen by your neighbors. That's probably not going to change at this point. But that's, that's just my, my initial reaction to what I'm seeing. And it seems like an opportunity to find a nearby property that could, where you could store these. Might be a better situation, but that's just, just what I'm thinking at this point. And I don't know if my fellow commissioners have any observations or thoughts about that.
I think, just to go back to the last hearing, I think last time, Mr. Rutherford, you, you had mentioned, I think your request for the variance was because you didn't want our, the expense of kind of concreting the driveway was, was too high. Is that, is that correct?
Say that again about the driveway?
There was, I think last time we had asked about, there was a variance request here and one of the things that would probably be necessary to kind of continue to park the vehicles here would be kind of providing an actual concrete driveway. But I think instead of doing that, you submitted the variance request. Is that, is that correct or accurate? That's what I remember from my notes from last time.
Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, there was a, I had a variance hearing prior to this one. And in, in reference to the county required me to pay, to pave a concrete. The driveway. And went through that hearing and, and the end result was I was required to concrete apron for that and we, you know, complied by that and, and got the apron done. So maybe that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I had that because I was, where my head was at was just on this, if there's probably a, an enclosed area that meets those standards around being accessible through a hardened surface. It feels like 40 acres, there's probably a place to put it. But, so that's where, that's why I was asking just to kind of confirm that. Because I think the issue last time was about having a hardened surface and making sure things like enclosing the area to make sure that those eight vehicles, if they are kept, they are properly shield, shielded from view, was taken into consideration. Commissioner Hughes, is that? My head is just that, probably finding a way to. My head is just that, probably finding a way to shield them.
Yeah.
And given that the concrete apron.
Yeah. I think that's something I, I would be willing to consider, a, a structure or, I don't know what, I don't know, something that's got a roof over it, maybe one side, but it's open on the other side so, so the vehicles can move in and out and be on a hardened surface. Is that kind of where you're going?
That's, that's where my head is.
Is that, Mr. Rutherford, are you following what we're saying as far as?
Yeah, so you're saying erect a structure over the vehicles?
Yeah, erect a structure of some sort so that it would be screened, so that people wouldn't see the vehicles that are traveling down Keaton or perhaps Hyrum Lithia Springs. They could be parked in there. And then when you take, then when your employees take them out or you take them out, you know, you back out onto your driveway there and, and go on to your, to your job location, I guess.
And can I, can I say this as I address that? All of my neighbors, really no, no one is complaining about the vehicles being parked there. I know all my neighbors, you know, pretty person, have a great relationship with them. There's no complaint there. I do understand what you're saying about erecting a structure overhead to cover the vehicles. Now let me ask you this. If we, if, if that's the only option that I have, could we not simply fence in that side along Keaton Road where, and the vehicles wouldn't be visible from, from a higher fence along Keaton Road on that side? Would that, would that be acceptable?
I think, I think we'd be willing to take a look at that. I think a site plan might be helpful so we know exactly what we're, what you're proposing to do and then we can make a decision based on that. So if you could provide a site plan showing us exactly where you would propose putting these vehicles, perhaps a hardened surface as well and fencing, show us exactly where you, where you're proposing to do that. I think that's something the planning commission could consider and we take a look at and then get back to you. How long do you think you would need?
Okay.
To put that together?
And last hearing, I mentioned that it didn't appear to be a problem. So currently the lot where the vehicles are parked, it is hard surface, it's, it's large gravel there, compacted gravel. That's a solid hard surface. They're not just, you know, parked on, parked on dirt. So all of that is a hard surface.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Belong?
Yes, thank you. What's the building to the south of this picture? Since that's not your house, your house is up here near Hyrum Lithia Springs Road. Yeah, what's this big building?
Yep, that's my neighbor's house. It's the family I purchased the property from, we're very, very close to. That is the daughter's house right there. Right there where you, Amy Fryer.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So what I think we left things was that you would consider submitting a site plan showing us exactly where the, these eight vehicles and I guess employee, and you also provide parking for your employees as well? And then showing us how you would screen those, visit those vehicles from streets so people don't see them as they're driving by? Is that?
Correct.
Your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thirty days long enough for you to prepare that and submit that to the staff so that we can look at it, consider this next month?
Yes, sir. I would prefer if I could, 60 days, but if it's 30, that.
We can do 60 days.
Sir?
We can do 60 days.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
So I will, my recommendation is that we hold this for 60 days to allow Mr. Rutherford to submit a site plan that depicts exactly where on the site on his property the vehicles will be stored, the landscape vehicles as long, as well as the employee parking and that you submit that updated site plan within 60 days.
Okay. Thank you.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a question? Motion passes three zero. We are going to take a break. Let's come back at 10:55, please.
Excuse me. Can I ask you a question?
Thank you, and welcome back to the May 7th Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing. John, if you could call our next case, please.
All right, next case is rezoning case Z21, CO2 Creative Group LLC, request rezoning from R30 to R20 for single-family residences in land lots 1045 and 1076 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Huntsman Way and on the west side of Springhouse Court, north of Ladder Lane. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Let's direct you to show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z21? Let's direct you to show there's eight people here in opposition. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir. If you could state your name for the record and go ahead and begin your remarks.
Great. My name is Simon Holt, and we are... We are proposing to split the current parcel. C71 consists of 391 Huntsman Way on the bottom side, and then 3760 on the top side. Our plan is to build a single-family home on that lot, which originally back in '72, when the lots were all split, it was part of the R20 designation back then. In '74, it was changed to R30, and the owner of the land at the time combined the two parcel, the two lots into one as a homestead exemption. But each one of those pieces of land are, if not the same, but significantly larger than the other properties in the area. Our proposal is for a single-family home and approximately 3,000 square feet in size. It'll be a traditional two-story home. We would use a mixture of horizontal siding and board and batten with a brick and stone veneer water table on the front elevation. It would have a roof line not to exceed the building height of Cobb County code, and obviously, we agree to follow staff comments and recommendations from Cobb County Stormwater Management, and we agree to exceed county erosion laws to prevent downstream erosion control problems. The idea is to build a house that works well with the surrounding houses. We have no intention of building a giant, huge, modern building that looks strange in the environment and with the surrounding neighbors. And so... We have... We've done... The proposed impervious surfaces is less than 25 percent, and... Yeah, that's it. So, basically, we're trying to keep a lot of the green surface, and we're basically putting a house in there that will look like all the other houses in the area. We're not trying to do anything out of the norm, and... The... I think what you're going to hear from the opposition, unfortunately, is that there's going to be stormwater issues, which we are addressing. We'll follow all the stormwater recommendations, but also that we're spot zoning, which is not necessarily what we need to do. We're looking for a variance to be able to build a single-family home on that property that would work with the surrounding areas. The two properties on either side of those areas, the land consists of 11,000 square feet to the right and 15,000 square feet to the left. Our property is 22,000 square feet, so we're actually considerably closer to the R20 designation than the two lots beside us, which are not anywhere close to the R30 designation, but they got grandfathered in, and we understand that. The problem is, we would have gotten grandfathered in had he not combined those two lots together. They would have grandfathered in, and they would be just the same as everyone else. We're not trying to do anything different. We're just trying to keep this lot the same size as the other lots in the area and build a house on it that is a single-family home. We're not trying to do anything weird with multifamily. We're not doing anything weird. And so... Obviously, it's an R... Our property on 391 Huntsman was grandfathered in, so it's an R30 designation right now. We could build a big, giant house on there, but we don't want to do that. We would like to be able to split the land with a... And put a regular, small house on there that fits in with the surrounding area. I think it's the best use of that property. I have pictures of what that land looks like now. If we're able... Are we able to put that up there? Let me see here real quick. Currently, there's a couple of different pictures. Okay. Hi. So... Currently, that's what the cul-de-sac looks like, and this is what the wooded area looks like. And so, we're really trying to make it nicer for the neighborhood. We've been to the HOA meetings. We've made a lot of friends in the neighborhood. They've all been really supportive, except for the two people that own property on the backside, that originally wanted to purchase it from us, but now want to fight us on it. And so, we just... We want to bring something nice to that area, and we're not doing anything out of the norm. And I think that's about it for me.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll hear from the opposition now, and I'm sure we'll have some questions from them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jacqueline Bededepour, representing the East Cobb Civic Association. So, this application is to rezone an R30 lot into R20, and Fox Hills subdivision, the whole subdivision or this particular area, is zoned R30. So, ECCA is recommending denial of rezoning 391 Huntsman Way to R20. To spot-zone two residential properties to R20 within an R30 subdivision is a bad precedent to set. This precedent would open the door for other similar rezonings, lot by lot, fundamentally changing the character and density of Fox Hills subdivision, an established community in existence for more than 50 years. Further, a precedent like this could be applied to other subdivisions, lot by lot, resulting in mixed zonings and densities within a single subdivision. Should the planning commission recommend that the lot be divided into two R30 non-conforming lots, there are the following concerns: The negative impact of stormwater runoff. Staff comments say the runoff needs to be diverted away from a neighboring property and into the cul-de-sac. What then? Will it drain through infrastructure located on private property, causing increased maintenance and repair liabilities for those property owners? Have they been consulted and advised? Staff comments state that there is an impaired stream, that stormwater will discharge through an established residential neighborhood, and that potential or known drainage problems may exist downstream. By improving an increase in impervious space, the planning commission may be compounding an already compromised stormwater situation impacting homeowners downstream. Finally, homeowners adjacent to what has essentially been a wooded lot for 50 years are concerned about the impact on home values and the continued enjoyment of their properties. To address these concerns, ECCA recommends that all R30 setbacks, building height, and other specifications, as well as appropriate landscape buffers, be stipulated. Additionally, it should be stipulated that the architectural style be compatible with surrounding homes and be approved by the district commissioner. To illustrate what can happen in the absence of such stipulations, I have a few photos from a property in a different subdivision that came before the Board of Zoning Appeals last year for variances. Note the large... You can flip through the photographs. Note the large, modern architecture looming over two more traditional homes. No landscape buffers. The separation between the homes is minimal. So, I've reviewed... There is a stipulation on file from the applicant saying that it will be traditional architecture compatible with the surrounding homes, but I think the homeowners need that extra guarantee that there will be a district commissioner approval before the construction moves forward. So, ECCA hopes that the planning commission will consider existing homeowner interests by adding the aforementioned stipulations to the case before us today. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Shivi, and I am on the Fox Hills HOA board, as well as the Fox Hills representative to the East Cobb Civic Association. I'm a long-term resident of Fox Hills and live on Pheasant Drive, across the street from Soap Creek, which I'm sure you've all known about. The stormwater and its effect on properties along the creek has always been a concern, but my purpose for speaking today is to provide you with an overall picture of Fox Hills. Our neighborhood was developed in 1969, several years before the county implemented zoning. My main concern is, like Jackie has said, is that it could be spot zoning, which would then could become a precedent that would affect not only our neighborhood, but the county as well. Fox Hills is a well-established neighborhood filled with young families, as well as longtime residents. Some young people that grew up in Fox Hills have now returned to Fox Hills to raise their young families. It's very important to me, as well as my neighbors, that we continue to preserve the look and feel of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim Nie. I live at 3750 Springhouse Court in Fox Hills. We have... My wife and I have lived there since May of 1980. The zoning request includes the vacant lot, which borders my property. There is more than a 25-foot drop in elevation from the center of the vacant lot down to my house. The zoning staff has recommended deleting to R30 instead of rezoning to R20. This would allow the construction of a home on the vacant lot. I have some serious concerns about any construction on this lot. In the department comments, the stormwater management... Excuse me. Evaluation states that, quote, "The proposed lot would drain toward 3750 Springhouse Court and the cul-de-sac." In the proposed project onsite design requirements, stormwater management further requires that any construction, quote, "substantially mitigate any effects of concentrated stormwater discharges." So, I have several concerns regarding the stormwater issue. I'm concerned that a contractor will not properly do what needs to be done to divert the stormwater. I am concerned that no one in a position of authority will monitor the requirements during the construction or in the future. I am concerned that if the construction goes forward, I will have little or no recourse if the owners of the new construction alter or fail to maintain the required stormwater mitigation features. Any new construction is going to put my home in harm's way for future stormwater issues. Finally, Simon mentioned that I offered to buy that lot, and I did. I offered to buy it so that it could remain the way it is right now, natural. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the Cobb County Planning Board. My name is Richard Mouch. I live at 180 Hitching Post Court, which is directly behind the proposed Z21 lot. I have a few concerns with this rezoning. My first concern is spot zoning, which Jackie mentioned earlier and should be heavily considered. Second, the submitted site plan shows the house 12 feet from the property line. My house is also 12 feet from the adjacent property line. If someone... If R20 zoning is granted, this will allow a house to be built 10 feet from the property line. There are no two houses in the Fox Hills neighborhood that are that close to one another. Having two houses that close will look extremely out-placed and does not match the current aesthetics of the well-established Fox Hills neighborhood. So, if you look on the screen there, the corner of the house is right next to... will be right next to the side of my house. So, my final concern is the new owners, the CO2 Creative Group LLC, may feel the property was grandfather... Or has grandfather rights and can be separated back into two lots. But grandfather rights should only apply to the original owners who merged the property back in the '70s. The original owners merged the two lots and kept it undeveloped for a reason, to maintain privacy, space, and a sanctuary for the wildlife within Fox Hills. Rezoning this parcel will only benefit the CO2 Creative Group LLC, not the community as a whole. Please take into account my concerns and the lasting negative effects that this rezoning will have on the neighborhood residents of the Fox Hills neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. No other opposition. This case is in District 2, and Commissioner Anderson will lead our discussion.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I'm going to, just to kind of lay it out, probably talk with the stormwater first, and then planning, and then quickly the opposition, and then the applicant, finally. And so, I'll probably move pretty quickly through each of those. But if I can have Andy from Stormwater come up, that'd be great.
Hey, good morning. Andrew Heath, Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Thank you, Andrew. Can you... So, two questions for you. One is if you can kindly walk through your comments, and particularly those that you wrote about impacts on neighboring lots, how you anticipate or what information you might have about how those plan to be mitigated. And then, the second would be the kind of off-site infrastructure that currently manages the stormwater discharge from that cul-de-sac. Can you talk about the condition of that and what... Basically, what condition that is now, and as Mr. Nie had mentioned, what impact that could have on the property, I believe, where some of that infrastructure runs?
Yes, absolutely. I had an opportunity just last week to meet with Mr. Nie and some of the neighbors that live around there and actually visit the site, in addition to reviewing it in GIS when I made my original comments. And the subdivision overall is an older development. I believe it dates from the 1970s. This lot has, as they mentioned, been combined, and it's stayed in a natural state until that time. The overall area is relatively steeply sloped. This lot is near the top of the slope, and it tends to drain off primarily toward that 3750 property where Mr. and Mrs. Nie live, and also a little bit toward the cul-de-sac as well in front of the home. And so, initially, when we reviewed it, the applicant hadn't provided a site plan, and I believe since then, they have supplemented their application and provided the site plan that we saw earlier there for the house. Ordinarily, if a house were going to be built on this property, the applicant would provide us with a site plan that we could review that would show us how they're going to be able to manage the stormwater on the site, and certainly, that would be the case here. The site plan that they've submitted at this point is kind of more... Maybe not conceptual, but it's not fully developed yet, out to the details that we would want to see for management of stormwater, but they would have to capture, for this particular property, they would have to capture the first one-inch of runoff from the... All the impervious surfaces on the lot, and they would be trying to, assuming that the soils on the site allowed for that, they would have to try to infiltrate that into the ground. If that were not possible, they would have to otherwise provide water quality for that amount of volume from the site. And I saw this when I reviewed the property, and then having visited with the neighbors, because the lot does slope kind of to the northwest and toward the cul-de-sac, toward the Nie's property at 3750 primarily. The Nie's already have a little bit of a drainage issue where the lot, even though it's in a natural state, runoff still drains down toward their house, and they've had to make some changes to their driveway and things like that to try to divert water away from their home. So, one of the comments that I had in my review packet is that I'd like to see this property, in addition to capturing runoff, they need to do as much as they can to divert as much of the runoff as they can away from the Nie's property and out to the cul-de-sac. There certainly seems to be enough gradient, that is enough slope, to make that happen and get the water out to the cul-de-sac. That would benefit the Nie's because it would reduce the amount of runoff that they see, you know, in the post-development condition. Concerning the broader subdivision and the infrastructure there, we looked at that when we were there, when we made our site visit last week, and as you would expect, the infrastructure is older. We looked at a couple of pipe systems that... One pipe system that picks up water actually from the cul-de-sac there in front of the property, and we walked down and actually looked those pipes. They are definitely showing signs of deterioration. They still appear to be functional now. They don't appear to be clogged and operational at this time, but that is something that would definitely bear watching, you know, in the future. And we want to, you know, think about infrastructure issues like that and try to be in areas like this, try to stay on top of that so that, you know, we can monitor that. In these subdivisions like this that are older, where the infrastructure is in place and there's a dedicated easement, typically, the county would maintain that infrastructure there. So, the pipe systems, the inlets at the street that are within the right-of-way, and then the pipe system outside the right-of-way that's within the right-of-way... Oh, pardon me. That's within the drainage easement would be something that would typically be county-maintained. So, the homeowners wouldn't have to maintain the pipe system. I know the homeowners had expressed some concerns also about, well, what happens when the water comes out of the pipe. There's still a pretty steep slope down the rear of those lots, and for better or worse, these lots have a fair amount of stone rather near the surface of the plot. And for better or worse, these lots have a fair amount of stone rather near the surface of the lot. And so, there hasn't been a lot of very aggressive erosion, at least that we could see here. But there would be some increase, definitely, of runoff from the lot, you know, that's going through this pipe system down that way. Overall, the discharge at those pipe locations seems to be stable. There isn't a very aggressive, you know, erosion that I noticed there. But the pipe systems themselves will bear watching into the future for, for the need for maintenance there. But hopefully, at least, the 1% annual, or sorry, the 1-inch storm that we would be capturing to provide runoff reduction for is thought to be about 85% of all rainfall events. So in other words, about 85% of the time when it rains, it rains about that much or less. So providing a system like that provides a lot of protection for downstream property owners. And then just generally, just directing the water away from those adjacent properties and out to the cul-de-sac gets it off of the individual adjacent lot owners and out to the public right-of-way where there's more, more major infrastructure in place there to deal with that. So that's, that's the way I think we would approach that.
Great. Thank you very much for the detail on that. In a situation like this, would there generally be a recommendation for, I know there's a 35% pervious, and the applicant has stated that they're looking at 25. Given the existing conditions, would it, with certain interventions like pervious pavers and other things, would there be kind of a sweet spot that's even lower than 25 in your mind, given some of the existing kind of weakness of the conditions here?
Naturally, with respect to stormwater, less is more, you might say. But they are at 25. I haven't recommended that they try to be less than, you know, a certain amount. So in that regard, I guess there would be some marginal benefit. You mentioned pervious pavers. Pervious pavers typically have a layer of stone underneath them to capture water that goes through them. And some of the topography on this lot is particularly steep. So if you build pavers on a slope, the water wants to kind of run through the stone down to the low side, and you don't get as much benefit from it as you might think. So there's probably some other BMPs that we could use on site. But, you know, certainly, you know, the, the impervious area that's proposed, to the extent that the board wants to, we could discuss that with them and see if there's a way that that could be reduced.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any follow-up questions for stormwater? Okay. Thank you. All right. Next question is for planning. So, in, Mr. Peterson, could you just discuss what the landscaping setback and higher requirements are for R-30 versus R-20?
Yes. For the side setback, the required setback for R-20 is 10 feet. For R-30, it's 12 feet. For R-30, the front setback is 45 feet. For R-20, the front setback is 35 feet. And for the rear setback, for R-20, the rear setback for R-20 is 35 feet. And the rear setback for R-30 is 40 feet. And there are no required landscape buffers in between the two zoning categories.
Okay. Great. Thank you for confirming that. So, since there are no as-of-right requirements right now for landscape buffers, I think it's pretty imperative that we add some, if, just as a discussion point. Okay, great. And then, my next question would be of the, of the, actually of the opposition. And I know there were several folks who spoke out in favor of that. But can Jackie from the ECCA, just for one moment?
Yes, hi.
Hi, Jack. Good morning. So in light of the, so thank you for the comments about kind of the different scenarios and the considerations for this case. The, I was curious to see if, in light of there not being specifics around landscaping buffers in R-30, if you had, if ECC, if there are any comments, I know there was a comment about adhering to those regulations, but given that there are none specifically for landscaping and strips, are there any that you have in mind that underlie those comments?
No, I, and I knew that there are no landscape buffer requirements in R-30 or R-20. But given this particular situation, I think it behooves the planning commission and ultimately the board of commissioners to provide some protection for existing homeowners that have been there for 45, 50 years, to provide some sort of landscape buffer. What that looks like or how big those buffers are, I'm gonna have to leave up to the experts.
Great. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions?
No.
Okay. No, I think that's it. Great, thank you. And then can I have the applicant come up, please?
Simon Holt, again.
So Mr. Holt, for the kind of stormwater concerns, you heard Stormwater address those and the concerns of the neighborhood. I would love to hear what kind of exercises you've gone through, whether with your civil or with any other kind of technical experts, to get ahead of or address any stormwater concerns. I think there's a broad language in it, in the STIP letter.
Right.
But given some of the sensitivities, are there any other conditions or interventions that maybe you haven't articulated there but that you've explored?
Right. Two things, because otherwise I'll forget. The first thing is, we don't, we don't need to rezone the land. We just want to get a variance. So if it's a concern about rezoning, we just want to make sure it's clear that we just want the variance to build the house. And then, in terms of the stormwater, we, we were just talking, we can, we would definitely agree to doing some kind of landscaping, border, borders.
Buffer.
Buffers, landscaping buffers, in order to help with those issues and to create the privacy concerns that have been raised. We would absolutely be open to do that. We, actually, I actually have my architect here. I'm gonna have Troy come up with me now. So he knows the specifics. He's my architect. He knows the specifics of what we're trying to do to make sure that we do it the right way. If you don't mind.
Sure, no problem.
Troy Spencer. We have also met with Andrew in the past to discuss any type of stormwater management requirements. And the homeowners have agreed to meet or exceed whatever recommendations that stormwater management would come up with. Whether that be the underground containers that provide the necessary buffer to catch the 1-inch of rainfall as that initial, or whether it be a combination of that and/or rain gardens, or any other type of recommendations he could come up with.
Great, thank you. And, and let's talk about buffers a little bit. So this obviously has a steep drop-off, and you're kind of on that eastern boundary, abutting right onto a neighbor. So is there any flexibility on a plan to provide more space to that house that is immediately to the east? Right now, there's a 12-foot setback that you're right up on. And so, where my mind is, is that that strip is currently obviously a wooded area.
Right.
And provide, and has been for decades. And so, I could see that being a shock to the person who's lived there for decades. And so, I wanted, obviously, if we do it, do anything respectful of that. Is there any way to effectively compact the site? In terms of your current configuration, to provide for more buffering, whether undisturbed or formal, on the eastern in particular?
Well, because of the setbacks of the current R-30 zoning, we actually used those setbacks to design the house within R-30 requirements, which is more restrictive than the R-20 that all the other homes in that neighborhood have. So, you know, if it was in the original R-20 zoning, it could actually be closer without having to provide a buffer, especially on that side, because that's the high side. There's no additional concerns of that. However, I think it'd be appropriate, and the homeowners agreed, to install whatever type of landscape buffer as far as trees recommended to help provide a visual break for the neighbor, which would actually be more solid and more complete than just the tall pine trees that are there, that they can see right through right now.
And would you be open to updating a STIP? Usually in these recommendations, we have a little bit more specificity around landscaping strip, species height, things like that, just to allow for folks to really just have a commitment that if you're planting a bunch of green giants, or if you're planting a bunch of shrubs, that we're not, it's not the, it's the former, not the latter, to provide any visual.
One other comment to add is also keep in mind that this house design is only going to be a story and a half house design. So this isn't going to be a two-story house with a roof above it. The second story of the home is sort of built into the roof design for that sole purpose of making sure that it's a natural fit on the houses around them so that it doesn't have that large feel to it. And since it's also only taking up 25% of the lot versus the R-35 allowed on, on the R-20, you know, we feel like we've been taking into the consideration the things necessary to, you know, basically help them to be good neighbors and to not create a negative impact. So the average mean roof height of 35 feet would actually only be, this house would be closer to 25 feet because of the story and a half design. So again, it's not going to require green giants necessarily. You know, great cherry laurels, some other are providing. Something along that side would be more than appropriate to block the majority of the house from the neighbors. And we're happy to do that.
Great. Excellent. And then, do you have a sense of what the finished elevation will be with the height?
For the average mean roof height, as calculated in the, by zoning, it would certainly be below what would be allowed even for the R-30. I, we're estimating that that would be somewhere between 25 and 27 feet.
Okay.
And 35 is allowed.
Okay. Great. And so, moving just on buffers again, onto the house, the buffer next to the Nie's house to the north, just with, do you happen to know how high those trees currently reach right now, by any chance?
Right now, the majority of the trees on the property are pines and maybe some, some older, just much taller, where you mostly just see the trunks of the trees. Very little greenery as far as up against them unless it's just brush, from my memory. But, and I don't think the visibility would be as much of a concern with the property, the house being located to the other side of the property primarily. And then also, because of the stormwater concerns for the Nie's, I would be just as concerned as the Nie's. And so, we're going to make sure that there's nothing for them to worry about. And to Andrew's point, that, that changes that we would make to the property would probably improve the Nie's stormwater issues that they're having now with no development on the property. Because it's going to require us to re-channel that water and to make sure we can get as much of it back into, to the aquifer as possible.
Great. Do my fellow commissioners have any other questions? Okay. Great. Thank you very much. So I think that, I think I have, you know, I've had an opportunity to talk with several, both, several members of the community on this and kind of helpful feedback on the concerns here. Just a couple of points before motion. One is that I think that this is a situation where we, given that it's been for several decades, there's a kind of a reasonable expectation that a single lot moved to a subdivided lot is something that normally we would, you know, this isn't just simply a subdivision split, but I think it is important for this community where I believe there's other lots like this which have been kind of merged. Lots of lots like that around the county that we're cognizant of those concerns. So even though it can be as-of-right, a house built here, I think this is an opportunity to certainly, if there's clearly stormwater concerns and buffering concerns, and at least have an ability to address that. And so, finally, on the stormwater side, I also think this, there is an opportunity to have probably what sounds like improvement to some of the existing conditions as a result of this. And in terms of what Stormwater has discussed and their interventions, that can be really accomplished through the grading and how we actually divert runoff from the site. So I certainly respect and understand the stormwater conditions right now. I do see some opportunity here to actually improve those. Not necessarily worsen them. But that's certainly something where I think that's a technical discussion I'm not equipped to answer. But it is something that we have a reasonable expectation to have the client stipulate. So with that, my motion, so my motion would be to recommend, consistent with staff comments, deletion to R-30. So we'd say R-30. And then, there are a couple of additions, conditions. The site plan received by the zoning division on February 5th. Approval of the lot size variances as shown on the submitted site plan. Consistency with all R-30 required setbacks, building heights, and landscape buffers to apply to both properties. That's just to make that very clear, although it'd be pretty explicit by virtue of the zoning. Architectural style and site plan to be compatible with surrounding homes and to be subject to final approval by the district commissioner. On the east side of the new lot, a 10-foot landscape buffer, subject to county arborist approval. Along the remaining sides of the new lot, the new lot's the one to the north, a 10-foot undisturbed buffer. So that would be the south and the eastern boundaries of both lots. And the stipulation letter dated April 29th, 2024. And then, all fire department comments and recommendations, all water and sewer comments and recommendations, all stormwater management comments and recommendations. So that would include the directive to divert any runoff from, to the Nie's and minimize the runoff that occurs. And all Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. That is my motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No called question? It's not, okay. It's not working.
Just go by hand.
We'll just go by hand. Motion passes 3-0.
Okay. Next case is rezoning case Z-22. Lounge 234 requests rezoning from Light Industrial to NRC for a restaurant in Land Lots 370 and 423 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Atlanta Road, north of Molesley Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-22? Let the director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward? Be sworn in.
Hi, how's everyone doing? My name is Martins, and I'm here, my partner.
Ayesha. And Amira.
Amira.
So, we propose opening a restaurant, an African restaurant. So we propose opening a restaurant, an African restaurant, right in the property, right on Smyrna, Cobb County. This is actually going to be the third restaurant we're going to be opening. So we had to come to Atlanta to see. This would be a big, a good fit for us.
What, what type of restaurant?
Oh, it's, it's an African restaurant, an upscale African restaurant.
And hours of operation?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, we, you want to say?
Okay, the hours of operation is from, is it seven AM to two PM? Two AM during the weekend. So we can do seven AM to like ten. African food is something that is very hard to get in the Cobb County area. And ninety percent of Africans eat Nigerian, African food. So it's an area where it's going to be a good market for us.
So for the, for the hours of operation, so we're looking to open from Monday to Thursday from seven AM. We'll start breakfast, then lunch at twelve, then we stay open to twelve AM during the weekdays, then weekends from seven AM to two AM, Friday and Saturday. And Sunday, we probably going to stay open to twelve AM as well.
Okay. You have, you mentioned this would be your third restaurant, I think. Where are your other restaurants?
The other ones are in Ohio, Cleveland, Ohio.
Cleveland, Ohio?
Correct.
Okay, so nothing here in Georgia. This would be your first restaurant in Georgia.
This is the first one, yeah, first option.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Peterson, do we have a budget to take field trips to Cleveland, Ohio to check out these restaurants?
No, we do not.
So can you give us, again, Mr. Peterson, can you give us staff recommendations regarding hours?
The staff recommendation was to limit the hours from seven AM to ten PM, seven days a week.
And the reasons for that are?
You know, if it's a restaurant, you know, there's really no need for it to be open to two AM in the morning.
So, can I say something? I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. So additionally, there was, there were some comments about variances in the staff recommendations. Can you just review those with us?
Yes, there are four variances shown on the site plan, and these are mostly due to the as-built existing conditions. Number one, they want to reduce the lot size from twenty thousand square feet to seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-one square feet. Number two, they want, they want to reduce the front setback from fifty feet to twenty-four feet, which is an existing condition. Number three, reduce the left side setback from required fifteen feet to fourteen feet, which is also an existing condition. And reduce the rear landscape buffer from twenty feet to zero feet, which is also an existing condition.
But there were, there were no additional variances beyond just allowing the existing structure to remain. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And were there any other major concerns about the operation of a restaurant at this location at all, other than the hours?
The hours are the main one. And then I think, you know, they need to stripe their parking lot, so it means county code as far as how big the parking spaces are.
Okay. So you've heard from staff and really, really the question back to you is operating the type of, apparently you have a model for these restaurants, you've operated them in Cleveland. Given the fact you have some residential property behind you and staff is recommending we limit the hours to ten PM, is this something that can work for you or not?
I'll say it defeats the purpose because if we're staying open for a morning, a lot of people go to work, people go to school, a lot of people are not outside. We actually target the people who are coming back from the club at night and, you know, they're drunk and are hungry, looking for something to eat. They'll, you know, come in to buy food. That way we're making more sales. That's, that's the target market.
Okay. Is it something that would possibly, so basically what you're saying is these hours just don't work for you?
Correct.
Yeah. So would, are you, are you in a position where it would benefit you at all for us to approve this subject to staff's recommendations to market this property to somebody else for another restaurant? Or, I mean, for example, have you already bought the property where this could perhaps benefit you? No?
We're losing the property. It's a lease. And this property's been sitting for a long time. The landscaping, when we, when we got the property was not good, wasn't in good condition. We had to, we cleared it up and we did some spending already. We did some cosmetic works. It's nothing to write home about. It's more, more like an abandoned property because the landlord wasn't doing nothing to it. So we got in there, we painted inside of it. He already has most of this stuff because it was formal, it was a formal restaurant that was zoned into a light industry. And now we're looking to zoning back to a restaurant. So we're basically not doing much work, but doing the cosmetics. Painting up the outside, making it look more presentable is the aim right now. And, you know, opening up for business as well.
Let me open this up and get input and thoughts from my fellow commissioners and...
Just so I'm clear, I think you just said you've already leased the property? You've already entered into a lease?
Yes, sir.
Just a question. How long have you been in this lease so far?
It's been since last year.
Since last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you, so you haven't been able to operate this since last year? Just kind of paying the rent on it?
Correct.
Well, just, okay. And the lease doesn't allow you, is it subject to you getting this zoning or this use? Or is it just you, you went into the lease and?
No, I think we, we, there's no way we can go on with this without signing the lease with the landlord. Because in order for us to get informations about the property, we need to sign the lease and come into contract with the landlord. In order to get some of his, because we have to, in order for us to submit some of these, we have to get his deeds and some important documents about his property, like the tax papers and stuff.
Okay. So you have signed the lease and have had it for a year with the landlord? And there's no way to get out of it absent paying some hefty termination fee?
No.
At this?
It's, it's not something we can just terminate because it's, it's a twelve-year lease, a twelve-month lease.
Oh, twelve months.
Twelve months.
No, sorry, five, five years.
Five-year lease, and you're a year into it?
I'm mixing this up on my auto property. It's five-year lease, yeah. And we spent close to forty, forty-eight grand. Just paint in and, you know, we have some equipment in there already, like a walk-in freezer that we had to fix. Most of the stuffs are already there. We just had to change them and service them. We did the grease trap because it was blocked. We had to service it.
Thank you for the background on that. I just wanted to understand kind of what the current condition was and what the current structure was that you had signed up for.
No other questions for the applicant? You folks can have a seat while, at this time. Thank you. So I guess the question is how we reconcile staff's recommendation with the fact that's really just not going to work for this operation?
Oh, is that, you want to bring that to our attention? That's, is that what it's going to look like?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I tend to agree with staff's recommendation on the limitation of the hours. I am a little concerned about the target market being folks that might be impaired. That, that's a concern for me. It's unfortunate that it appears they've already entered into an agreement with the property owner before they were sure that this was going to be approved.
That happens in the restaurant business, but I guess the question is, do we, do we proceed with a denial? Or do we approve it with staff recommendations so they could perhaps remarket the property to another restaurant group?
I like the second option better.
Okay. All right. Then in that case, my motion is that we delete to TS subject to all zoning division comments and recommendations, one through nine. Do I need to read these all into the record, John, or? Okay, okay. Site plan received on March four, two thousand twenty-four, number one. Number two, applicant to stripe parking area to meet parking regulations, number three. The only variances allowed are those mentioned in the zoning analysis necessary for the existing structure to remain. Any new development to meet code regulations without any additional variances. Number four, restaurant use only. Number five, hours limited to seven AM to ten PM, seven days a week. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number eight, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number nine, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations.
We have a motion? We have a second?
A second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call question? And it doesn't look like it's working, so we'll show by sign. Motion approves three zero.
All right. Next case is LEP fourteen. Flora Esmeralda Gonzalez requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in landlot fifty-five of the twentieth district. Property is located on the south side of Hickory Cove, west of Hickory Chase. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for lot fourteen, Flora Esmeralda Gonzalez? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? Mr. Vice Chairboard, the applicant is not present.
All right, this case is in District One. What is the pleasure of Mr. Belloin?
Do I need to make a motion on this or can I just recommend we hold this for thirty days?
It could be either one.
Yeah.
Continue.
That'd be my motion, that we continue this for thirty days.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion to continue this for thirty days. I'll provide the second for that. Any, any discussion? Okay, show by sign or by? All right, it's approved three zero.
Okay, next item is LEP sixteen. Stephen Duncan requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in landlot eleven oh-six of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the south side of Megan Way, southwest of Chanta Lane. Is applicant present? Let director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP sixteen? Let director show there's no one opposed.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Duncan. I am the owner of four-seven-zero-five Megan Way. And we're asking for, we have nine children, all of them being teenagers and older adults, four being in, still in high school. They all drive, so we have more vehicles in our driveway than, I guess, the code allows. So we're just asking that we'd be able to park our, our vehicles in our driveway.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate that. There's no opposition here, and this is in District Four, so that's the district that I represent. I noticed here from the aerial that there at least appears to be a three-car garage on one of the structures there. I'm assuming that there might be another garage, perhaps a two-car garage on the main structure. Any reason those vehicles can't be parked inside?
On the one side, there's, on the three-car garage side, there's a loft above it that is built in as like a mother-in-law suite. So there is a car inside that garage, but on the other side of that garage is the, you know, it's a working garage tools and different kind of things like that in that garage. So two of those spaces are taken up. A couple of the vehicles will not fit into those garages. So, and mainly thing, you know, putting something in, most that stay in that garage is vehicles that don't move or that don't move in and out every day. Most of the other vehicles move in and out every day, going to school, going to work, going to issues like that. And on the other side, it's really not operation proper to park inside that garage. It has a, you know, it's not to be able to get it in and shut the door. So there is actually a car in there right now, but it's a nineteen seventy-three Z twenty-eight Camaro in, in the one on the house.
Okay.
So basically, it's just all of our vehicles and our children's vehicles, which all four of our children that are in high school have driver's license and a vehicle. And then two of our older children also have vehicles, but we're not like running a business out of here. And I think the original complaint was there was a multifamily living in the home, and that's why there were so many, or there was multiple families living in the home, but it is me and my wife, our six children, and our three foster children.
Okay. I'm just looking at a form that's here. I see you and your wife listed along with your children as well. It looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So it looks like six of the seven have vehicles. Is that correct? The fourteen-year-old doesn't have a vehicle.
She's fifteen now, but no, she don't have a vehicle, but that would soon be coming, you know, not at this point, but... And then unless a couple of the other ones get married and move out.
Okay. All right, I think that's all the questions I have for now. May I call you back up? Let me check to see if my fellow commissioners have questions for this gentleman, while the applicant, while he's up here. Okay. If you take a seat, don't go too far, and I'm gonna have code enforcement come up, please.
Good morning. Galisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Good morning. Could you, I know just based on some documentation I have that a code enforcement complaint was filed. Can you kind of bring us up to speed on what the status is of code enforcement as it relates to this particular?
Okay. We received a complaint January ninth of two thousand twenty-four stating that four business vehicles are at the property daily. There's dumpsters, employees at the property, and eleven vehicles daily. An officer went out on January eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four and issued a notice of violation for customary home occupation, single-family dwelling, parking standards to the owner, Brandy. There was two business vehicles present during the inspection. One was parked in a front yard on the grass. The officer explained the ordinance and how to come into compliance. The owner stated that multiple people in the house have a business vehicle. And the officer told her she's only allowed to have one business vehicle. The officer recommended for them to apply for a lot because they are allowed to have six adults and six vehicles. But out of the six vehicles, four can be parked outside of the garage or carport most of the week. The owner did complete an occupancy statement showing who all lives at the property and what vehicles that they do have. And they did come and apply for the lot. I had an officer go out to the property to see if there were any business vehicles on four-twenty-seven. The officer observed, oh, just one business vehicle parked at the property at that time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I can have the applicant come back. So the lease, based on staff's presentation, that indicates that there are businesses associated, what sorts of businesses?
I drive a business company van, and my daughter drives a company vehicle. There's generally only one company, my vehicle that I drive daily is generally the only business vehicle. But we're not operating a business out of the home. We're not conducting business. He did say we had employees. Um, he did say we had employees coming over, I just had the house repainted, um, we've been doing some structural work on the outside of it, but other than that, we don't have business meetings at this place, um, and, uh, it's a family-owned and operated business, so my two daughters, me and my wife, um, we do, uh, work for the business, but we don't park business other than the vehicle that I drive daily, um, to manage jobs and go back and forth, uh, it's the only business vehicle that gets parked on the property.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have, um, clients coming in and out at all?
No, absolutely not, he was saying that because we, I do have nine children, one being Atlanta police officer, other being, uh, United States Marine who just come home, um, and so they come over, we have lunch on Tues, on Mondays, um, you know, but other than that, the only people that are generally in my home or on my property are blood-related family.
Gotcha, um, I noticed one of the vehicles in the image that's showing up here is parked on the grass, that, you know, it...
That, that's very old, and, and I, I'm not sure what, I don't know what vehicle that is, it's kind of hard to see, but, um, generally, we don't, uh, my daughter did come in our, and, or not my daughter, my son-in-law, um, did come and park down at the bottom of the yard, and that's where the one business vehicle that he was coming to visit us in, but he is my son-in-law, um, he parked down at the bottom on the grass, just not to block the road, I thought he'd pull up on the grass, and so, um, and it did sit there for a day, uh, but we, they came and said move it, we moved.
So, um, I know there's no opposition here presently, but I, I'm in receipt of at least, well, two, uh, complaints that were submitted with respect to some of the activity here, I'll, I'll just read a couple, it says, don't allow the variance, they have up to nine vehicles in the drive and on the street, uh, they're concerned about traffic, um...
Yeah.
Vehicles coming and going of all, um, all times of day and night, um, so that's one concern that apparently a neighbor may have, and then another one that just says, um, you know, some of the, the car, some of these are company, uh, vehicles, vans that create noise on our street, making it difficult to, uh, to get around them, uh, allowing more parked cars at this address will make it more congested, so you're at the end of a cul-de-sac, so, um, talk to me a little bit about your, your, you know, parking on the right-of-way, is that something you do, or you try to encourage everybody to at least park in the driveway so that your neighbors can...
Mainly, it's parking in the driveway, with all the vehicles, you know, we don't wanna leave them down, especially the personal vehicles, there, a time or two, if people come over or something, they will park down at the end of the road, or we have a birthday party or something like that, but everybody on that street would do the same thing if they had a birthday party, they would park down at the bottom of the street. Now, we would use the cul-de-sac, you know, 'cause there's no house, there's only one house in the cul-de-sac, there's only, uh, three ha, or two houses on our, basically on our street and their family, and that's kind of the one that, we're the newcomers in the neighborhood, so, you know, if we, if we wash our car and listen to our radio, the police gets called on us, so, I mean, it's, you know, I'm a pastor of a church, all my children, the music ain't, we ain't, we don't throw parties, we don't get drunk out in the yard, we don't, uh, I mean, we're not a new, and there's no cars coming out all night long, and every one of my children, even my twenty-two-year-old daughter who lives with us, is generally home by midnight.
Okay.
So, um, we don't, we don't bother nobody, we don't, we're just wanting to be able to park our vehicles, and I get the street and all that, and we're not trying to block the roadway or, you know, um, cause, you know, any kind of that, but you know how many cars come down our street?
How many?
Three, besides ours, and that's the neighbor that lives across the street and his son who lives right beside him, he drives a red pickup truck, and, uh, um, son drives another little pickup truck, and the other son drives a car, that's it, those are the only co, the cars that come down our street, and so we're not prohibiting those cars to be able to, if we did park down at the bottom of the driveway, um, we're not obstructing the roadway to where they're not able to maneuver, and, and we're not blocking a driveway.
Yeah, and I can see though, another concern, obviously, is in the event an emergency vehicle needed to get here as well...
Absolutely.
And so we wanna be sure that, obviously, that's...
And like I say, mainly down there at the bottom is, we're, we're just asking for, we don't, we're not asking for permission to park on the roadway, we're asking, you know, that we be able to park our cars on our driveway, which is a very large driveway, and we do have vehicles inside the, the garage area, so...
Right, okay, are there any other questions y'all have for the applicant? John, what is staff's recommendation here?
The staff recommendation was to deny the request.
And what's, what staff's, um...
It's based mostly on the Code Enforcement action on the property.
Okay, all right, um...
Which would be understandable if it, if, if, if it wasn't residents of the home, or we were operating in a business, or, you know, we're law-abiding, the citizen is just trying to use our property, we're not trying, and the, and just so I may say, these ain't, every, the, the oldest vehicle sitting in the, um, driveway is a two thousand six, but anything after that vehicle, and that's my eighteen-year-old son's, um, they're brand-new vehicles, they're not, they're not broke down, they're not junked up, you know, um, they're just our personal vehicles.
Appreciate that, um, I think based on, um, well, I think my recommendation is to, to, to recommend that we approve the lot, uh, but only for twelve months, uh, and that, um, Code Enforcement staff do quarterly visits to the property to determine, um, compliance, um, with, um, a couple of conditions I want to, to add, uh, one is, uh, there'll be no, that, that all vehicles be parked on a hardened surface...
Absolutely.
...in the driveway preferably.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I, I really, I wanna add a condition that no on-street parking be allowed as well, um, and that would be, uh, my motion.
Second.
Okay, so, um, that's a motion and a second, any discussion, call, all right, we'll call a question. Okay, so it is approved for twelve months, um, with those conditions applied to it.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you, sir. You have to come back in two weeks to have, uh, appear before the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
Yes, sir, yeah, two weeks.
That completes your agenda.
That completes our agenda, gentlemen, um, I think we have two other things to consider, the first is, let's consider our minutes from the zoning hearing on April twelfth. We'll need a motion.
I'm move to, um, approve the zoning minutes from, uh...
I'm sorry, April second, excuse me.
I was looking for the twelfth, I was like, did I miss something? Move to approve the minutes from, uh, the April twelfth zoning planning commission hearing.
April second.
April second, planning commission hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, um, any discussion, call a question, show my sign of I. Minutes approved, three-zero, and then minutes for a special call meeting on April twenty-ninth.
Move to approve the minutes from the special call meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second, no, any discussion, motion approved, that concludes our meeting for today, we stand adjourned.